Does this recording? You're all set.
We're all set?
Yep.
Good evening, everyone. I would probably need your order. Uh, welcome to the board. Tom, Tom, select board meeting on September twenty fifth, two thousand twenty five at six P M. Board number roll call. Carol Stromeyer.
Amy Alexander.
Mike Gardner. Jamie Percy. We all rise from the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well.
Yes, sir. Oh, it's not blue, but.
Yeah, it's just.
I'm looking it up.
And so that video still on.
Don't mean what you mean here.
No, it'll also be recording. It just won't be zoomed in on. It's okay.
What you want, okay. Uh, promote the agenda. Uh, we need to add E W, please. We don't have that. What do you want to add, John? That's what it's for.
Would you pay more? Yeah.
Yeah, actually.
Also. Um, we'll have to talk somewhere. I've been wanting to say.
Yeah.
At the worst before updates.
Right. So seven, we'll do the seven B. All's in favor, or any emotional approval agenda when adding the excess movements.
Oh, to put each other having access to permits.
Oh, second F.
Any discussion? All's in favor.
Hi.
Oh, public counter.
Hello.
No hands are up. Is anybody in the room?
Anyone in the room? Okay. Approval of minutes, August twenty eighth, um, two thousand twenty five, so for me. Motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second motion.
Any just.
Well.
Where the national?
Well.
Oh, house.
I have a motion, I have a second, any discussion? Questions, comments, corrections? All in favor?
I.
Minutes of September fourth, two thousand twenty five, special select for me. I'm gonna take a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second motion.
Any questions, comments, changes, discussions? All's in favor?
I.
I'm saying.
Minutes of September eleven, two thousand twenty five, select for me. So.
Second.
I don't think we can roll them.
No.
So, well, I mean, get going on it. Wait, wait till next minute.
I want to read them.
Yeah, Brian's here.
Brian's here. No, it's Gina, little accident. We don't want, well. Okay. Orders counts payable. On September nineteenth, one hundred sixty-two thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars and maybe six cents.
So. Second.
Questions? All in favor?
I.
Counts fail September twenty-six, thirty-nine thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars and one cent.
So.
Okay.
Any questions? All in favor?
I.
Payroll, September nineteenth, eleven thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty cents. Move.
Sorry. Okay, we got it. Same.
Any questions? All in favor?
I.
Payroll, September twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five, eleven thousand two hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-one cents.
So, second.
Questions? All in favor?
I.
Uh, excess weight permits, back of industries, W U D D A L E S. This is a fleet permit. George approved it. It was complete, there's certain liability insurance, it's here, much pleasure.
And you'll also do rules that access weight permit or patent industry. For our road form, strike in the beach. Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
I.
Updates from time officials.
You. And we, we don't think we're having trouble with it. World person on the. I know, okay. I know, if you. Do that. Um, so my first announcement is actually from myself. I'd like to thank Tom's older, they may tell for their help. We need grant application for the bike industry and the work we study, but with fun. They were awarded the forty thousand dollars in federal funds to complete that, so. This place is very exciting. Um, the second announcement slash question for the board. Um, Jen, I just wanted to write that twelve sets is only for a true, but. My I shouldn't see any, we're liable to okay, but so.
Good morning.
For enjoy. Um, there is from Walt Finer. Ladies and gentlemen, on Thursday, the actions of September twenty twenty five, I finished a victory with the banking challenge, we do, you should be there. I'll be used to that. As the meeting for the patients were made about the maximum to honestly planning to the new runoff, so it's easy, yeah. This is a good response plane as it goes to panel, has areas of critical concerns with significant impacts from probably future adverse water impacts. Under Act twenty-two, one, twenty-one, call will be required to adopt specific zone by law. So reducing such impact by January twenty twenty. It may be proven for its own only paying administrative to begin looking into identification of potential one critical impact zones along the who's safe. And. And looking for the potential new bylaw language for consideration by us. Uh, state of the law, so I'm ready to my Alice is now available online as a tool. Other systems is available to move my, uh, filing for conservation, we need to be sexy. Well, this is from conservation function about the eight or September. With the recent addition of bachelor, the parenting and mortality, the conservation commission will be interim as third year of existence, so the narrative signing and community group of seven K D members does nothing with wide range of scales and excess. While this last year was challenging for our commission and proud to report that we are in the final stage of raising our comprehensive account inventory, probably assigned those as a blood. Thanks to our community and asset by commission members, as well as contributions from the public, we are community conversations, installation of the public library. We are able to provide impressive list of over two hundred and fifty points of interest that collectively makes up the fabric of what makes our council such a twos right, residents. Working closely with her parts, the same page of the B C R C, they are now creating an interactive map to help the public visualize these common points of interest. We hope share the final listing of the public in coming months. With the old version awareness of locally, you know, our development, so thanks for coming to offer. In addition to the town, we feel ready, the conservation commission from where the public person that creation of a town forest body with plans to handle interpretive signage, public input, parts of the forest management plan, and many of the current materials that will be needed to navigate the town for it. Members of the commission were prepared on employees of the B C R C, the better be transbrand application. We're supposed to studying, we're developing a policy. This will be studied with build on the work of the B C R C did in the public center, they excited. Boom, look at the possibility of converting a small section from the side of a homicide and doors to ask one of the home though. Given that only three of the original seven kind of numbers remain, we have spent the last few meetings working on about the emission statement and a set of diverse month release to help guide it. And our last meeting both created a number of thought bases, being able to hear the total of the panels and important products. At most, so I work through vocals. These products include mitigation with basic species or anomalies. We developed a faith, faith department which is not mentioned, how? The ministry, the road mitigation, we're going with Ben Trail. Designing a chaos and interpretive information for the town force, brand writing to response, the trail development and interpretive signs. Holdifying our mission, mission and responsibilities and professional document. Daniel is sustaining farm, we did involve the works with the lower communities and missions. As a chair of admission, I am incredibly optimistic about what we are going to be able to accomplish moving forward. All her current owners are critically enthusiastic and full of energy. And ready to take the helm on some pretty ambitious projects that I believe will have a profoundly positive impact on the quality of life here in town. We are so honored and thankful to be serving under a select board that has done so supportive of our goals. And we are very excited to kind of raise help support being in that way, okay. Um, in addition to that update, they have a, uh, formal request. Um, from. Same. I was just saying, I was connected for the movie that's fading. Is that five years? That's the which from number two, I don't know. The river bank erosion? Yeah, yeah. Do you want to speak to that? Sure, yeah, absolutely. You want to come on? If you don't mind. Why don't you, you're easy to hear, that's, that's. Wow, yeah, so along these then trail, there's some riverbank erosion that is uh, essentially pressures and we also just don't want to give them a riverbank, so. Um, the proposal that there is in there is we really just want to then plant some native species that are already growing there, for sure, babe. Um, that's a G has and some sign issue. So. Now, we're asking you, Tom. Yeah. All right. Yes, this for a. Yeah, um, I would do big part really. Where was that on the word? Um, it's, it's really mostly started to get that. That's where the.
Trail, so it's. Straight on a lot of times, there's a.
The park, yeah, parking lot.
It's, is it on the north side? I'm trying to, I'm trying to picture because I'm not. I know, always waters. If you go down there, okay.
Yeah, both sides.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Just wanted to say, we'd like to do that with your permission. I mean, I think that's fine.
Yeah. I don't think we need a motion, no.
I'm good, thank you.
Thanks.
To my no room. Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Jen.
Yeah. So, the one I was trying to have was from twenty-eight. And it was a request for the board to ask our option on the exception. But Ryan was going to see through it a little bit. Will you start his travels, really? Online, I don't know, but we just wanted to put your conversation off. If we might see the rest of that information. Because it's, it's not even an actual 15 thousand feet, so.
It's gonna Friday, but. Listen, we can put it off, it's interesting. Is Fred out?
No.
Not leave, sorry. We can, we can put off, we're, we're ready to see. Is there, um, was there an update from Craig there? I don't have that. Is there still burned down after the rain for last night?
I have not heard in the last couple of days.
I think that's a statewide, like. And it has, and it has, you know, it's been about a state. Yeah. Maybe Craig's line is today, they're still good, right?
The last thing, you still. I think it's still busted.
So. I'd like to find that mail from great. Was it, it wasn't email, right?
There wasn't email, I didn't have that face.
I, I didn't read. I don't really spend much time, you know, there is a statewide burn man for getting outside fires.
Very.
Because, because of the dog, which I think it's on the website. It is, we, we did put it on our website. We'll try to gather it, had it. Um, mentioned tonight, so.
Oh, yeah.
And still the fact, even though we have the rain, as far as I know, it's totally fine. Yeah. We haven't seen, we have not seen anything that said there is, that has been left, so I'm going to go with it still in place.
Yeah, it's still place and you, um, request that we report for all vacancies and that information is on our website.
Good. So anybody that's having a hardship from the drought conditions. Um. Report that, you know, to the state of the winter there, I think, too, right?
Yeah, and what happens is that always the state statewide, it's probably rush emergency funding.
Yep. So if you're having a hardship, I'm gonna be sure to report that. Please report it, because we, nobody knows. And if they can help you if they don't know. So, we're still waiting for, is there anything else from Tom officials? So we're still waiting for our V H B.
I think they're on them.
Oh, okay. State's website.
Oh, he is on, okay.
We're good?
Yeah, they're on one.
Okay, so we're running, um, former problem info supplemental investigation report. I think that's Kurt Lawler, wondering.
Evening, everybody. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
I mean, Tom's down.
Just got it on, give you that's all.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not muted. Can you hear me now?
Kurt is not muted, but for some reason, the audio is not coming.
I'm not muted, can you hear me?
We can't hear you, Kurt.
Yeah, we can't hear it.
Not muted.
Are you?
I mean, I can hear you, but, uh, not sure if anyone else can.
Anybody here, Connor?
Can you hear us now?
I can hear you, you can't hear me.
I'm not.
Can you unmute him, okay?
He's already unmuted, something about the audio is not.
You able to hear me? Let me try that. How about now? Can you hear me now? Hello? No?
It's our first time for. I mean, it's still just me, apparently.
Sean Donovan.
It's something about our system because Sean Donovan just chatted and said he can hear Kurt.
Ah.
Either, huh?
Ah. Oh, okay. I don't think so. Microphones are either. I don't see the great lighter. If we have them, they will move, but when we update they're gonna move.
Phone audio. Can you hear me now?
Yes. We're here.
Is that yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Good, okay. Bumpy start tonight. Accident on eighty-nine and minutes late, uh, we're here, so. Um. Yeah, I, I have, uh, Connor Remington joining me as well. He's a, a geologist with V H B that's been supporting the fieldwork. I wanted to listen in and, and then Sean, can you hear us as well? Are you on the line?
Yes, I can hear you, Kurt, and I'm just wondering if the, the select board can hear me.
Yes, we're good.
Okay.
Very good. So, um, wanted to provide an update in the landfill investigation and sort of the next steps in transition into uh, evaluating the corrective action alternatives. Uh, I'm gonna share my screen if that's, I'm gonna send a request to share my screen. And then we'll go from there. There we go. Okay. And, well. Fair. Can folks see my screen here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Excuse me? I thought there was a question.
No, no.
Okay. Uh, so this, this, this next round of investigation that we performed um, was to determine, further determine the extent of the phosphat contamination in groundwater. Uh, we, we had discussed previously that there was, and I'm gonna change this over to this. There was this interesting geology at this site, in particular, this esker feature that was causing a preferential pathway and causing that, you know, contaminant to migrate further in this direction. This is an older figure. We installed additional wells here along this property line to capture what may be migrating, and that was a request from D E C and it's per the I rule, which is the governing document here that we, we need to determine the nature and extent of the contaminant, so we installed the well as far down as we could on this property, and in fact, the transect of wells to understand what the extent may be. Uh, we also installed several new pezometers, which are these, these hand-installed wells in this constructed wetland area and two new monitoring wells in this general vicinity again to determine the extent of impact. Um, I'm gonna switch, I'm gonna move forward a little bit here. This is the, uh, potentiometric or, or the, the groundwater contours essentially. And you can tell that, you know, the geology is kind of unique and interesting and in, in where the landfill itself is, it's clearly moving to the north northwest, and then as we get this constructed, or I'm sorry, this, uh, forested wetland, it begins to shift to the northeast and then it hits this esker and begins to move to the north. So we tried to capture wells within the property boundaries that we had access to, to capture the extent. I will note that during this investigation, I know we've gone through a drought recently, but this sampling actually occurred right after some fairly substantial rain in June. And so the groundwater levels were quite high. And it's reflected in some of the concentrations here, so this well in particular, this H B M W three, which is basically at the toe of the slope of the landfill and at the edge of the forested wetland. Um, that was the highest concentration that we've seen. Then we continue to have this migrate kind of to the northeast and then along this esker feature. And this was also the high, one of the higher concentrations we had seen. And then this new well here, we also had detections um, and exceedances of the standard, but you can tell that it's not migrating outside of this esker zone. It's really kind of focused along this pathway. So basically, the way we're interpreting this is you have contamination that's coming from the west landfill. It's hitting this, had a high hydrogeologically higher water table than normal in this wetland where it usually would flow into and almost dilute. In this bank essentially of, of, you know, changing the direction and flowing into this esker, so these data, I think, are more driven by the fact that the water levels were so high, um, uniquely high in this, in this particular instance. Um, the, the concentrations were again a bit higher than we had seen historically. I'm gonna transition into, these were the drinking water samples that we collected and the, you know, the best news here is all of them continue to be below the, the, the state standard of twenty parts per trillion, so our creep, we, concentrations have been relatively consistent. We've seen nine point one being the highest concentration. But even though there are detections, there aren't exceedances of the applicable standard. Um, there is one property on Maple Grove Drive, last name Holly or Jolie. Um. That we had reached out to initially and some way, somehow there was, uh, he sent the access agreement apparently back via hard copy. We never received it. We didn't have the appropriate number for them. Bottom line is we've connected with them and we're, we're making a trip out there uh, early next week to sample his well to add to this, this map. He had had some concerns and, and wanted to be included in the, the sampling event, so that will, that will take place early next week. And we can update this figure accordingly. We also, as part of the scope that was requested and approved by D E C, we also sampled surface water at a few different locations again. There isn't a standard specific surface water, but by default, we use the groundwater standard. In that case, it's twenty, we're still below that state standard in all of these locations, the current state standard. So the update, you know, basically is the, the plume continues to migrate. We have one more round in the, in the requested scope from D E C, one more round of groundwater sampling. And in discussing this, you know, extensively with Sean at D E C, you know, th- th- this, this site has been you know, robustly, for obvious, you know, based on the, the, the cost that has been incurred. We've investigated this thing well. And even though there's, you know, there's some concentrations that appear to be potentially migrating further to the north. Um. And I don't mean to speak for you, Sean, I'm just basing this off prior conversations. Sean had, had mentioned that, you know, based on this, it's time to begin to transition into what we call the evaluation of corrective action alternatives. Is so, we still need to monitor it, but it's, it's, you know, we need to do something about this, so that's already part of the contract, the initial contract to do this evaluation of corrective action alternatives, and what that basically is, is evaluating different alternatives or a combination of them to identify, develop a matrix essentially and say, you know, option one would be this, option two would be this, option three would be this, option four would be this. Put some preliminary costs in there, evaluate the effectiveness, evaluate the need for long-term, you know, um, monitoring, et cetera. And then have a discussion with this group to identify what the best path forward is. Kind of a little preamble to that. You know, I think the most obvious and, and effective treatment would be if there was a scenario where any of these drinking water wells exceeded the standard. There would be, there, there are these point of entry or poet systems, basically a water treatment system that would be installed at the individual homes to address the issue, because otherwise, we're not gonna dig the entire landfill up, and if there's much work that's done at the landfill, it's going to take time for that to flush through, it's just, the, the, the horses are already out of the barn, so to speak. So I think that's probably a very obvious selection in terms of what, you know, our remedial strategy would be. The other thing that, that you to consider is the fact that the east landfill actually was capped appropriately. The west landfill was never formally capped. So the reason that's important is you have precipitation going through the landfill, basically infiltrating, picking up the PFOS that are in the landfill, and then those horses are continuing to quote unquote, you know, run out of the barn. So to have that landfill capped with a, a more impermeable barrier, uh, that would limit the amount of water infiltrating through the landfill and effectively reduce the amount of PFOS contaminant that's being, you know, introduced to the, the overall system. And there may be a combination of both of those options that will be built into what we'll call the corrective action plan, which happens after this evaluation of alternatives. Another alternative would be to dig a, dig a big trench, collect water that's coming out of the landfill, have some sort of treatment system there. Um, you know, so a combination of the three, but we need to evaluate what those costs may be, the effectiveness of it based on the concentrations and, you know, the immediate need. Um, so I think that kind of sums up where we are and where we're headed. Um, Sean, I guess, do you have anything to add to that or comment on? Before we transition to questions?
No, not necessarily, Kurt, that's a, you know, that's a, it's a nice, high-level summary. Um, I guess the only thing I would add that I feel is pertinent to the conversation is that, uh, and I've mentioned this before in previous conversations, um, with Tara and with, in with, in V H B, um, is that the groundwater protection rule, which sets forth all of the uh, groundwater enforcement standards, the, the regulatory thresholds for every contaminant that the state regulates that are derived through the Department of Health. Um, there's a current iteration of the groundwater protection rule that is undergoing a rewrite and is, uh, as I understand it, the update I got today is that it has gone through the, uh, the first phase of inter-agency review and is now in a formal public comment period, that that iteration of the rule that has changes in specific standards does include a change to the PFOS standards, and as Kurt indicated, the current standard is twenty parts per trillion. Um. Those standards, if this rule goes through the, the complete final stages as written, will, will, will reduce the standards of PFOS, you know, the, the threshold for enforcement um, to a lower standard. Um, I, I do apologize because I don't, I'm not in front of my computer, I can't pull that up right now, but, um, my recollection is that the, and, and anyone can check this, it's, again, it's widely publicized, it's, it's undergoing public comment. Um. That if and when that standard changes to the proposed lower thresholds, um, there will be the likelihood that some of the, uh, surrounding water supply wells will then be at or above this, this new standard, and so, um, that, that reflects, uh, a scenario in which, you know, these, as Kurt mentioned, these, these points of entry treatment systems, um, you know, will be that'll be the, sort of the higher priority area of concern and that, uh, an area of implementation that we need to address. It's generally my, my, you know, that's the comment I kind of wanted to provide so that people are aware of this, um, potential upcoming change in standard.
And maybe the only other thing to add to that, Sean, would be, well, two things, um. You know, in terms of the investigation of the landfill itself, it won't necess- You know, in terms of the investigation of the landfill itself, it won't necessarily change what we're doing. Um, it would just mean that those point of entry, as Sean mentioned, those point of entry systems need to be kind of in the, in the hopper, ready to go as opposed to being reactionary should we continue to monitor and identify an exceedance. So, um, I, you know, from the, from the transition phase of it, that's kind of the only difference.
Okay, you are recording.
Kurt, you can just hold on a minute before we go back to you.
Yep.
So, uh, the select board, um, will be to apologize for we had suspended or some inappropriate material in our Zoom meeting. We got so, so at this time, I'm going to ask the board, and it's not on our agenda, but at this time, an emergency thing. I'm going to ask our board that we are not going to admit anybody into our Zoom meeting that we absolutely don't know who they are. And it's going to be this board's responsibility from here on in to set a policy for Zoom meetings. So that, I don't know how to do this, this is going to be all brainly, but it's going to be this board's responsibility to set a policy, put a policy in place to, um, wherever we can, within our power to make sure this is ahead. So at this time, I'd like to entertain emotionally that we will not let anyone into this meeting. That we are not totally confident who they are. So.
Second.
In further discussion, and I apologize to somebody who is trying to get in that we don't know who you are. It's not that we're trying to ruin anybody. We just don't want this kind of, um, feeling of the power. So.
Yeah, I thought I'd add to that especially, um, and we want this discretion to take, to, to not be prolonged. And so we will find a solution, we'll try to secure a solution to this authentication solution prior to our next legislative meeting. Um, and of course, we're always open to attend here.
And we apologize for any sort of, we have no control over that. So I have a motion that I'm saying belongs to me. Anybody else? Nope. All of them there. Uh, and I, again, I apologize for not letting people in. What we have to, we have to be there on the side of caution, you're sure. Sorry, Kurt.
Um, I mean, I kind of lost my mo-, my, my momentum there, but, uh, I essentially got to what I wanted to explain. And I certainly an opportunity to ask questions and, um, so.
I, I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, when, when you say that we're going to go from this, um, groundwater testing phase into a remediation phase, what do you think the timeframe or realistic timeframe is, or don't we even have a clue?
Yeah, we have, so we have one more round of groundwater sampling. That's part of the budget and was part of the work plan and requested by DEC. So we're doing that in the late October, November. It's a seasonal thing and that's part of that. And assuming that, that, assuming that that tells the same story, um, which I, which I'm confident it will. We're going to be kind of in parallel, developing this evaluation of corrective action alternatives. So I would say by, that is, it's perfect timing over the winter to write the, the, the report and then do this evaluation. Basically, it's going to be mini corrective action plans for each of these alternatives. And then in the spring, March, April-ish, I intend to present to you, here's the various alternatives, here are the benefits. And it's not going to be a quote from a cost perspective, but it's going to be a ballpark of, this is really expensive, this is middle of the road. And then that'll give us an opportunity to do two things. The first is select the most appropriate alternative. But then also begin to go after the funding through the CWSRF to get that covered. And so we have to, once it's selected, we write a corrective action plan, which is, which is, you know, goes beyond just, here's an alternative. It would include landfill cap design, it'll include detailed. So, you know, it's something that could almost be incorporated into bid documents, so to speak. So that's the next step after the ECA. And so I envision spring meeting ECA results and then corrective action plan, applying for funding and then implementation, hopefully in the fall, if, spring, summer, fall. If indeed, um, you know, the funding's obviously available. Maybe it's done stepwise where these POAT or point of entry systems are the higher priority and get those picked off to then deal with a larger, more expensive landfill capping project. You know, if, if the funding's not all there initially. So that's, that's kind of looking in the crystal ball. Anything you want to add to that, Sean?
Uh, no, nothing I want to add to that. Uh, I, I guess, um, with, I guess with regard to the funding aspect, uh, Kurt and Tara and I, uh, were obviously aware that there was a, a letter sent from the panel select board to the commissioner's office at Vermont DEC that was regarding funding for these emergent contaminant issues and groundwater and the plight that funding is needed for this community. Uh, again, that was received and replied to, um, and I, so I guess I just want to encourage the town to consider that approach because it does, that, that area is out, really outside my wheelhouse. But, um, it seems to me from what I've learned through the, just being involved with some of these larger sites and specifically with PFAS issues and groundwater, that, uh, that funding mechanism, even though the, the, the reply was generally, you know, a little vague, um, it seemed that there is an opportunity there for the town to receive some additional funding source, you know, to receive some additional funding, um, by way of the, uh, CWSRF loan with either forgiveness or additional substantial subsidies. And so again, that is not my area of expertise, but I, I do believe that it's a, of, an opportunity that should be pursued. Um, I guess that's all I, I have to add there, but I'm happy to answer any questions that might come up as part of this conversation here.
Oh, yeah. Could you just walk me through something? Because I'm thinking that, um, this is something that folks will be concerned about. Who might not, um, much like myself, understand all the technicalities of this. So this change in the rule, um, where it triggers an enforcement. Um, if it is the case that where additional groundwater is tested and drinking water is tested, and you find out that more people are affected, what is the process in which that they are notified of that? And then what options do they have at that point? Because of course, they may not be able to wait for any remediation.
So currently, as Kurt had summarized before, we have, we, there, there are exceedances. Getting a little feedback there. Um, there are exceedances of the groundwater enforcement standards, uh, which are, you know, obviously y- is being managed appropriately through this process, um, through the, uh, assessment, you know, trying to characterize the extent and magnitude of the groundwater issues. When it comes to drinking water, um, issues, you know, that's, that's an area where at any point in time, if and when there is a private drinking water supply well that has shown an exceedance of any applicable regulatory standards, there's, uh, there's a process by which, you know, that resident is notified. There's this, there are mechanisms in place which would provide that particular residence with, you know, it's a broad scope, but, you know, whether it's bottled water service or which the state has a mechanism to provide. There's Kurt mentioned these point of entry treatment systems, again, which the state has a mechanism to implement, um, you know, there, there's a notification and a procedure to make those scenarios, uh, and, and reduce obviously the exposure risk and health risks. And, you know, this is widely, uh, this is scenarios that are sort of, um, implemented throughout the state presently and anticipated to, you know, to, to be expanded with this ever-growing concern of this PFAS issue. We have other communities throughout the state where drinking wa-, private drinking water supply wells are sampled through the investigatory phase. And in the instances when those drinking water wells show, uh, the concentrations above this particular standard, then we have a mechanism in place to get a filtration issue or bottled water supply in, in, in place. And, um, you know, that's generally speaking, that's how this is, this kind of unfolds. Obviously, you need to address the source of the issue. You, you know, we need to try to mitigate and remediate any potential ongoing release or threat. And so, um, you know, I feel like we're, we're well, this site, as Kurt already said, you know, is, is well characterized. We ha-, we know the, the source. We know at this point, we have a really good data set. We know kind of the direction of the, the plume migration. We know drinking water wells that, um, are within the, the adjacent areas that are, that are showing some levels of PFAS, but not currently above the threshold standard where we would say corrective action is a, an immediate concern. Um, and so, you know, that's generally how we treat all of these sites throughout the state. It's not panel-specific per se. It's, um, it's, it's a regulated prescriptive process. And I, hopefully I'm answering that question, um, but let me know if I need to elaborate, please.
Any one question for Kurt or Sean?
I had questions for you, Sean and Kurt, but I forgot them all. So, uh, would it be okay if I forward some of them through Tara to you?
Absolutely, yes. Yeah, you know, it's, in some way, it's, it is unfortunate. I do apologize that we were not able to attend in person. It's panel, you know, panel hours south of where we're located.
It's a good timeline. I appreciate that, Kurt, um, you know, giving us an idea on a timeline moving forward. We were, maybe we can move forward and get some of this stuff behind us, which would be kind of good.
Agreed.
Also, just like to throw out that, you know, um, again, I, I, it, I'm more than happy to accommodate an in-person meeting. Um, obviously Zoom isn't the best platform. Um, I, I'd like to try to, i- if possible, maybe set up a time for us, especially when we get through this, this next round of testing and we have this document that, that lays out the correct, the alternatives that we're going to evaluate to approach. Um, some final steps toward corrective action. Perhaps it makes sense for us to head down to panel and meet with you folks face to face. Um, I think that clearly is the preferred option. So let's just keep that in mind.
Perfect. You know, who'd like to have that option?
I hear panel's beautiful in the spring. Okay, a little bit of echo. Good night all. Thanks very much.
Right. Highway Department Truck Purchase Financing Discussion Hospital Action.
So the last meeting, um, when I was here, the three board members that were here approved to purchase the truck without giving me or Joel in the, um, in the motion permission to go finance a truck. Um, or ask if, you know, how it was coming from the equipment fund, et cetera. All that should be in your motion. Um, and I need it also for banks and the external auditors when we go purchasing. I am saying that in the motion. So I had looked into some financing just because sometimes we do that when Joel presents to purchase a vehicle, et cetera. Um, right now, we are working on, uh, with approval from the board to go forward. Um, Joel and I worked on an application for the station equipment funds, um, at two percent interest, which is really good compared to what I get from banks right now. Um, we were before, um, two hundred, well, so the state says a hundred fifty. We're going to try for a waiver to get the whole two ten at two percent. Um, but if we do not, that will be a hot mistake. We'll have to take out two loans to purchase a piece of equipment. Um, we don't know about the state until December, end of December. So then that, once we find out from them if we're going to get any money, then I will go back to the banks. At this time, I did get, um, four point nine six percent from MT Bank. It's who we basically use, um, for a five-year note. That's about thirty-one thousand, yeah, over the five years of interest. Um, I did speak to Community Bank also. They were here actually right before, um, Joel had come in for the equipment purchase. And I sent, tell me what you need us to do in order for you to provide me quotes for a loan. And we would have had to put, um, X amount of dollars into their bank and they would have given us a five point one three. And that would have given us, but that's for a loan right this minute for two hundred and ten thousand. That's not, they can't tell me what the interest rates are going to be in December. I just want you to know that that's where we're floating with. Um, so expect a, uh, interest rate anywhere between, you know, four, six percent, depending on, but then they're supposed to do another adjustment to rates before December is what the banks had told me. Um, so it just depends on how the economy is. But we just need approval to at least be able to apply for, if you're allowed to go buy a truck. We need permission to finance it. So I'm going to need it, I want to come in on your, be seventy-five thousand. Okay, probably on the road equipment fund, seventy-five thousand will be the town's portion of the loan to pay and not borrow. That's what we can do from now.
The truck, the truck was two eighty-five, that's, that's right.
Eighty-five and change. Two eighty-five, four seventy-seven.
Okay.
That was the quote.
Well, that would have been helpful to me to that bike.
Early experience, right? So not a problem.
Our apologies on that.
That's why, because I specifically as treasurer, I need permission to be able to actually get documents for you to sign in the future because you won't be involved in all that. I want to go and sign it and we'll come back before the board again.
So my question, uh, I mean, obviously it, it sounds a much better idea to go for the state to two percent. That sounds a lot better to me than a five percent says. I just said it's not guaranteed and we also have to request the waiver for the cap on that to try to get it all right. But that is it. It sounds like with the timeline though, that doesn't necessarily right impact when we get the truck because it has to be built out anyway. Where the truck does.
My truck is a ninety days. Ninety business days.
We're looking December.
Okay, so it sounds like we definitely need to state and then.
And, and then I'm going to have to go, I just, I don't want to come back, but you mentioned to go to second one.
Yeah, right.
If I have to. I just need a motion that we can finance this truck, two hundred and ten thousand with the best rates we can come up with. With the best options.
You have, if not slowly fine, I don't really expect you to have it in the top of your head. Do you have the difference in interest between the state, the loan and?
I did not do any kind of. I, I made the banks, I made the banks give me an amortization schedule. Um, so that I would know exactly how much in the position, obviously, paid out the principal. I could have allocated out, but I figure at five percent, at five percent, if it's thirty-two thousand at two percent.
You math, I get it. I, I get it. I get it. Just, you know, yeah. Right, right. Nice. I did know if you had those numbers off.
No, I did not.
We certainly can figure that out without a lot of trouble, but I was just, you know, curious if you had.
I did not.
And I didn't expect it like I said.
I did not, but the principal payment would be, you know, like forty thousand and change.
So you need a motion for us to authorize you to move forward with the state. So you need a motion for us to authorize you to move forward with the state, you know, totally.
To move forward with financing.
By the state, the state and the state as a country.
Right, okay.
I want to add a motion to you, have the treasurer move forward with uh research and maintaining financing um fifteen hundred and ten thousand dollars for the purchase of the truck with seventy-five thousand dollars going on of our equipment, um.
Awesome.
One second. I have a motion in a second, um, any more special needs? All of the parents. That's what we need, right?
Yep.
Very much.
Been ninety working days from September fourth, well, and January seventeenth.
I think it's right in the middle of January.
Request from Steve Zellman for the town sponsorship and to get on board, probably.
Is that you, Steve?
Yeah. Oh, I was just asking that you would help me save for the first, as I said, and get on board, so that we might support us. Uh, first, I went to the first one last Saturday. Pretty good, I liked a lot.
Can you explain what it is so that everyone understands and look again on board programs?
Oh, so sure, you're on a board, you're solving, um, they're assuming that we're some of the first.
Really encourage instead of involving the agents, um, not into the tools, not in the all of them.
Okay, no, I, I just want everyone to understand what it is.
Then I'm very glad you're happy there, as not a few of the other participants, that's good.
Yeah, I'm very good.
Yeah.
The next one's gonna be everything everyone knows about town government, but we're afraid to ask, and you can say. It's awesome, seeing that, I picked up a few things, but I think this is a lot, I have that.
So what is, also that, it's like
Yeah, it was two hundred and eight, five hundred and fifty for me with a
Oh, wow.
So I need fifty dollars and eighty cents as pounds.
I mean, that sounds interesting, like, I, and I do, I think you're going forward, so having like some, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that, but like a scholarship fund to encourage other town residents who'd be interested in that and serving on wards to go through that, it sounds
We have to have some sort of scholarship board.
Yeah.
That, that would be a deal there.
I think I heard the last one was in twenty twenty-three, sorry, what's your thoughts on that, in operation?
Yeah, I might be doing all things, it's fine, but
Um, I, I'd like to see if the, if the board voted to approve this expenditure. I'd love to see just a report back from you, Steve, on what you learned and, and different things and what you what knowledge and stuff you acquired from class. Okay, you know what I mean, I, I, you know, to see what, you know, what you could share with, you could come into a select board meeting and you could share with the residents, you know, in a fifteen-minute or a ten-minute steal on what, what you've learned in, within that program, I think that would be, then, then I think there will be money for the lost that, because, because you could, you could present to the, to the residents who don't know.
Yes.
And are part of this program, this onboard program, you could present to them what, what actually happens and what, what you learned. I think that would help you.
And do a present, do a, do a ten or fifteen presentation.
Just a short presentation on, you know, on what you've learned.
Yeah.
I'd like to see that.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of running for the uh cemetery, and then I figured about this class and thought I should do it.
That's great.
More about it.
You know, I, I think that's the one thing that I would ask, where you know, spend the money, you know, then I'd like that, just for the that, just so the taxpayers can see that, okay, we gave you a fifty dollar and, oh, fee for a class, but this is what the results were here, so. I think that's all there is, that's all I would like to see.
And I did get somebody at first class, so I've been emailing, it's on there, cemetery.
Well, then, so then you're not, I guess, I would move to approve this expenditure. The understanding that you would come back, you have the completion of the class, and give us like a fifteen-minute presentation, and then you'll have questions for people in our community, yeah.
And that, go to your companion's last class, right, AD thing.
Okay, yeah, everybody go ahead and
Keep Tara, keep Tara prepped, so remember, no, and then she'll put you on a, on a
Right, I, you could come in and tell Tara that, you know, where the class is completed, and she could find the time and put you on, you know, on the agenda for I would say, you know, no more than a fifteen-minute presentation, and then, you know, change for people to ask questions or whatever. So I have a motion on the floor for an expenditure out of this select board um, expenditure, my, for fifty dollars and eighty cents, sadly, that. Any more stuff? All of the bear.
Hi.
So.
Uh, thanks so much.
I want you to take care of
Hey, I'll, I'll take it.
Okay. Well, that the chat box on, right.
Yeah, I, I figure out, I just want to, I, I would get, I'm, if I don't, I'd sit down.
Okay, perfect.
Thanks for the initiative, you do this.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks.
Awesome, perfect.
The next agenda, it was planning commission recommendation on the upcoming act two fifty change discussion impossible action.
I forgot, I took the sign, I didn't actually, I haven't bought.
Well, we don't have Fred here, so.
Four Brian.
I think we should wait.
I think we should put aside the next event board meeting, and hopefully Fred can join, so we don't have a huge problem.
They table that.
That's right, so we'll table that until, next Friday or four. Uh, AARP Vermont Livable Community Winner Placemaking Grant Discussion Impossible Action.
Who has this, um, another grant, I was maybe I wanted to clarify for placemaking, um, using it for Clayton Park and likely by the pond as well, as well as invention of the trash inside the walls. Um, because making place is a way to create connection on, but then it's, they declared it part last round, I thought we did not that so. I'm still looking for money for that part, so that we can really contribute.
Question about, where were we thinking?
In the fall offs.
In the fall offs.
Right, yeah, in the fall offs that are on a long path, um.
I have the idea of putting something there, and I like this idea in general, I think it'd be a lovely place to sit, you know, visit, I mean.
Just, where you go on a coffee, or sitting down, or
Exactly, it's a pretty, okay, they're both are great locations, some places, uh, both cities, so.
Oh, just had, have this bottom in mind, like, this is, yeah, I love, uh, the, the, so we have, um, by the trash can, some of the waste disposal. We just like leave that, and other that being
So basically, uh, highway department has been very gracious to take over, taking the garbage out.
Oh.
And like, we're some trash, such, or, or public, you know, some materials, because we've had some overboard trash can. Um, so they're taking care of that, it's really great.
That's great.
What's more, spoken?
Uh, I, would use the proof, I'm adding Sarah Go Ward, and for the placemaking grant.
I'll second that. Any questions? I have a question, is this a, a match grant, or is this a full one? This full, I just, you know, let us come up. Okay, so it's a full word grant, no, no, a match, no contribution, so, I have a motion there, second. Any more stuff, all of the bear.
Hi.
Cemetery bylaw discussion impossible action.
I have been working on this, so I've got the bylaws, I've used our notes, exactly. The last time we had this discussion, several weeks ago. Um, and of course, I had written notes, uh, I left a link on the table, which is very helpful for all of us. But I do know where the provisions were, and, um, if it's the board's pleasure, I can sort of walk us through those provisions. And I know if you want to wait till next time, that's fine.
That would be nice, because then I could get a chance to absorb this.
Yeah.
That would be very, that would be
Okay, I'm just sort of, um, uh, just saying now, like, what is really the edits on this has to do with, like, in several instances, um, where we talked about how that taking care, just like some of the deaths and vaults, of dealing with things like lots in the cemeteries, and lots, and the markers and other thing. Everything was sort of basically on the shoulders of the executive assistant. And so then, you know, like, the addition to that was
It was meant from her to the commission.
Well, and we actually added an executive assistant, so just for the time being, and it's not for other town employee or official designated by the select board. And then, when there was a discussion at the end of this about the commission, we'll do X, Y, and Z, it wasn't clear which commission? And so then I verified the cemetery. Make sure that's clear, um, the other thing that we said we wanted to edit is there was a fourth one underneath cemetery maintenance, that specifically developed our physics and cemetery, and we had a discussion about that, so I just eliminated that. And the other thing had to do with, um, burials, so specifically, um we permit burials during the winter, provided that it's actually feasible at one take place. And so there were some exceptions about dates, uh, what was that, like Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year's Day, we talked about eliminating those. And so now it's, someone can have a burial at any point in time, as long as it's feasibly possible, and the family would incur additional cost. And, and not this town. The last provision that I need to do was, it had to do with the burials specifically, and what was uh, the acceptable required, um, in addition to the burial packet. And there was a provision in that indicating that normal losses that knows the misery can create a regulation that there gives for religious burial practices. And I just added a clause after that, that says according to me, exceptions will be made to accommodate the disparate acts. Um, I use will be made as opposed to shall be made, in case there's something that someone wants to do, like who knows what, that is a violation of some other law, so we're not bound to um, um, something, I'll imagine, I don't know, but just make sure that. So.
Well, we are very used to have, um, the like, you, yep. Okay. Thank you. All right, that was up, training, the next.
Well, I wanted to bring this just coming out back again, because I feel like there are a lot of things that we should, we could, we all should have to be, sort of, be planning future-wise. Um, we heard about one of that tonight, which was the mediation transportation. Um, when we make it off, how we budget into our annual projects fund or something, to start thinking about that. That's just one example of, but, um, I think that the transportation related to contractors was a little bit of a push, it wasn't planned as well, as we need to be hoped, um, so thinking about that since the budget season, I was hoping that you all could come back to the meeting with your personal ideas of what your hope should be, or sort of out-of-bash ideas on what you want to focus this budget season on. And some examples of that are the transportation, if we're talking about, um, a building grounds employee, possibly to change away from the contact technology for building grounds, it's just a suggestion, um, but planning a year out at least is essential to make sure that we're budgeting what we need, like, we should be updating our business, that ensures we have open equipment, we should be having a payment table, what roads are getting paid next year. Um, they started waiting until a year off, you know, just plan that stuff out, so just trying to get all polling and hoping that you all can come back with my ideas and how to be in the conversation about that. Start with me, what are your thoughts now, with like, how we get this started, with vision, so we're not
We should kind, we should kind of start this before we start next year budget.
Budget, that's, that's right, because it's about it, so then, it's all stuff that we do, thinking about.
So my idea would be, um, consumers can give me a double, you know, so you should come out with holistic things that you should have capital plan or capital asset, and you should as well, you know, Jalen and Brian. And we all may have paid, okay, so that means we can be part of our capital asset, I mean, we're all probably gonna have or should have the well, you know, landfill remediation, that also, yeah, but there's a chance if we all concentrate on the entire tunnel, which is a pretty good chance that we're gonna promote some things that not everybody has on the west, right, because we've also been doing it. So I think, I think we're on like age, I think we bring a whole list of things back, each one of us, not just five things that we think are important, because there's a lot of things that are, right? And I think if we sit down, you know, when you have time, and write these off, you know? Then, then I think we really should cover, we're never gonna cover everything, right, we're getting this thing, we're not perfect. But we really should cover the broad spectrum of everything, there should be, when capital asset, I feel like
It's kind of, yeah, three different ways, we're changing so in, in the initial round.
We'll start, take it, oh, you go ahead.
Um, so that also sounds like would be helpful to our department heads as well, and ask them, please, to submit also their, like, wish list or planning ahead, as much as I hate to say it, like, once we have all of this, it sounds like a special session.
Or our, our whole, like, club session.
Whole day.
There might even be a health park.
Yeah.
I agree, I'm saying.
Another great focus is by kind of, we're gonna, a lot of the towns coming up, really, so, so planning for that, man, you believe
That was mine, that was even one of those, I had in my mind.
Um, the hurt with that kind of stuff, but
That's a point you were
And really start looking at exactly what we are doing and what we should be doing. But maybe we're doing stuff that, you know, it was great to do, but now we need to just rethink. What that is, I don't know, but No.
So I, I think, and I think James on the right, on the right page, I think this is gonna need a couple of
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And that, he means, this is where you can work on this, like we've worked on the budget.
Yeah.
And that would actually make it easier for us to work on the budget when we're going into that.
So. How would you feel about that? If not Nick before our next meeting, maybe two weeks out, working on an idea of like deadlines, but maybe you'd like to see what would be helpful for us to have, just you gather information first from us, our ideas, department heads, and then we could plan out some meeting dates, something that's, you know, this can, okay.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Do we want to set up, do we want to set up, um, that month for our department heads, you Yes, you know, you know, they're only capital asset, playing ideas back, yes, right? And then, and then we, the first, you know, this, that's So our next regular meeting is October month. And then we have only twenty-third, do we wanna have everything here in two weeks? And then, and then we go after that?
Why aren't we doing twenty-third, do you think, so
Well, you know, here's the thing, I, it all depends what everyone's schedule is, but we should really just do a budget, or budget session, we should just do a session with this capital planning session.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so we get our department heads to get us back their information by X date.
By X date.
Okay.
First, you, they, they should have an idea, no trouble, that's fine.
And then maybe, you know, yeah.
And then maybe we're like October sixth, move the work session.
Yes.
Yeah.
Good.
And this
That's a
It would be, I'm sorry, it was
Yeah.
This is all first, I have
Okay. Yeah.
So I, I think if they have it back towards five ninth, then we can have a work session on the sixteenth, by then we should have, and I think we should have our stuff here as well, by the night, so that, so that we can prioritize and develop some sort of a direction on the sixteen, and then we can, what we're Direction on the sixteen, and then looking what we had moved from there after. That makes sense, yeah. That was your report there, that was exactly right.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, any more stuff tonight? Okay. We'll try public comment, we'll see how this goes. Yeah, we're having a little trouble with the system though.
No hands are up.
No hands are up for public comment, we have any public comment you want? No public comment, then I want to turn the motion to you, enter executive for contractual.
Um to our executive.
Any discussion? All the favors.
Hi.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
Any discussion? All favors, uh I want to turn the motion to a jury. Um second, the discussion, all the favor, I. Thank you, Ron.